Good evening and welcome to our Wednesday, March 5th Board of Education Workshop. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Superintendent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Do we have any changes to the meeting agenda?
We have one change. We're going to add a public comments session right before the Items Report discussion.
Okay, thank you so much. Which would be now? So, we're going to begin. Our public comments, district residents who wish to speak will have previously submitted the completed Blue Request to Speak form from the table in the hallway. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board and may speak only once. In addition, we have a good number of correspondents that came by email. For the purposes of brevity, thank you for the lovely words at the beginning and the thank yous. We're going to skip that and I'll try to cut right to the meat of everything and get through as many as possible. But for now, for those who are here in person, we call to the microphone, please, Mr. Michael Reese, if you would say your name and where you live, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Reese. I'm in East Sotoket. I'm a Three Village Dad. I have two boys in the district. I did not want to come up here and have to be another parent who supports armed guards and watch those who agree nod yes, and those who don't agree shake their heads no, and nothing changes. Look around you. The world does not wait for its leaders to finish pontificating on what to do regarding security. We see at every level, local, national, global, weapons are needed for security. Smithtown has already implemented armed security, demonstrating that additional protections can be adopted without any reported incidents of accidents or misuse. The Three Village School District must follow suit to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. Every parent and community member who opposes increased protections would, without hesitation, look to a trained professional with a firearm in a life-threatening situation. Yet, we continue to delay meaningful action, leaving our schools vulnerable. The recent incident of a student bringing a firearm to school highlights the pressing need for action, even with parents in law enforcement, professionals, with training and access to excellent resources, including mental health resources, had an accident and a weapon made its way into a school classroom. Thankfully, no one was harmed on this occasion. Having armed guards is not designed to be a deterrent. So, those arguing that deterrence does not work is a red herring. The reasoning for armed guards is stopping an act in progress. I'm going to say it again. The reason for armed guards is to stop an act in progress. Studies that dictate armed guards don't prevent active shooter situations have nothing to do with how these situations get resolved, nor do they speak of the speed of the resolution of these situations. Stopping these situations is my primary concern. The safety of our children and staff cannot wait. You have a responsibility to act decisively. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this.
Thank you. And next up, Anthony Jetero.
Hello, everyone, and thanks again for letting me speak. So, I've been just continuing to do what I told you I was going to do. I was going to speak to a lot of community members, and now I don't even have to search people out. People are searching me out. And the constant theme is that they do not know why the reconfiguration that cost about $3 million is superseding now the start time, which is at a cost of $1.5 million. Start time is proven to have a benefit for students. I think everyone knows that. It's fact. And a reconfiguration is our desire to terror the system upside down. That's proven. And there's supposed to be a benefit to students. There is no benefit. Dr. Scanlon, I want to debate you in front of everybody because the schedule aspect of the ninth grade does not exist, the scheduling that we're going to do for students. And one of the things I learned, humbly learned, is that I started this process on my own, and I thought I can get people to understand. But it's so much better when I bring other people in because other people have ideas, too. And, you know, I'll read a couple of them because I'm proud to just read what people are sending me. The district has a choice. Spending millions on a rush plan that has no, that is, that no one is fully prepared for will commit to one change that is already in motion and overwhelm me supporting. Later start times. Pausing configuration is the responsible financially sound and most logical path forward. Let's not create problems when they don't need to be. That's one. I'm going to read you another one. These are just, you know, people, I'm meeting people at Chase Bank who are telling me that they want to, they want to speak with me because they heard about the reconfiguration. And reconfiguration, everyone, you proliferated, you told everybody that it was what the community wanted. That's not what the community wanted. You do not have the support for the community to do reconfiguration when we have an in-place, programmatically successful district, and we can enhance it, which I think I shared the ninth grade experience with you, and we haven't even discussed it because we're moving this thing forward. So, another one that I'll share, give you one second, I'm going to lose my time, right? Well, basically, all I'm saying is that I will continue to have conversations with anybody and everybody because reconfiguration costs us over $3 million, and that is to put the same, more students in the same blueprint to have no programmatical benefit that we currently don't offer now, and we can enhance that ninth grade experience. I know what it's, what movement is to move the students up so we can do something in elementary school. If that's the case, you can do that. But you can't do it on the backs of our students who really know, who really know, and that survey showed you when you talked to students, and you had the mic, you had the mic, so you coerced a lot of that conversation to tell everybody that we're behind, we're the only one. But at the end of the day, people know that what we offer is good. Your students told you, 50% of them, even when they were coerced, that this is where they want to be. Jolinas is the best place. Jolinas is the best in the state, right? Ward Melville's a Blue Ribbon School. What do we change?
Thank you, Mr. Jetero. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll begin now with our written correspondence. As parents and longtime residents, we care deeply about this district and want to ensure we're making thoughtful, responsible decisions for the future. When the board approved this plan, the understanding was that key details would still need to be worked out, and yet with just months to go, significant issues remain. The high school renovations, now estimated to cost over $2 million, haven't even started. Many in the community assume this plan was further along, and now it feels like we're being asked to accept a rushed and expensive process without full transparency. Taxpayers were not made fully aware of these costs, were led to believe we'd be saving money, and with budget concerns at an all-time high, pushing forward without broader discussion is not responsible. Beyond the costs, the high school may simply not be ready by September. Adding an entire grade will increase congestion in hallways, entrances, and buses, making an already crowded campus even more difficult to navigate. Security remains an ongoing concern, and this plan only adds to those worries. At the same time, the junior highs' phone-free policy has been a major success, but there's been no clear indication that it will continue at the high school. This is exactly the kind of detail that should be resolved before moving forward. With so much still unresolved, this timeline feels rushed, and many in the community are frustrated. A Change.org petition calling for a delay has gained strong support, showing just how many residents believe we need more time to get this right. If this plan were truly ready, we wouldn't still be asking these questions. We strongly urge the board to pause the reconfiguration. The administrative work done so far will not be wasted. But moving forward now without addressing these major issues risks serious consequences for students, families, and taxpayers alike. Taking the time to get it right isn't just the responsible choice, it's the only choice. That's from Maria Basile and Jorge Basile. This is from Jim Murray. I've not been involved as long as most parents that have been on this topic, but I've attended a couple of district meetings, and the only conversations I hear are around budget. Not a word around what the impact to the kids might be, or even how to ensure a successful transition for the kids. What I've heard from parents is, we've been speaking up about concerns for months, but the district hasn't given real answers. It feels like they're checking off a box that says "community input" while making it clear they're moving forward no matter what. That's not listening, that's just going through the motions. There seems to be ample data that supports the preference for the middle school to be structured as seventh to ninth grades, ages 12 to 15, rather than sixth to eighth grades, ages 11 to 14, can be attributed to several factors related to developmental, social, and educational considerations. When I've asked questions, all I've been told is this is a done deal. The transition to high school at the ninth grade is significant compared to it occurring at the 10th grade. If they're going to do that, what is the plan for the success of our kids? Thank you for listening. This is from Kristin Patrako. I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed reconfiguration plan for our schools. As a parent of three kids in the district, I personally seen the rise of mental health issues and the increasing pressures faced by students. I believe the middle school environment is crucial in providing a safe space filled with resources that support their growth and allow for necessary mistakes to prepare them for high school. Regrettably, I've not seen sufficient information regarding the financial implications or the logistical considerations that this plan entails for our students. The allure that they all have access to participate in clubs does not seem to justify such a significant change to a system that has served our community well for over 20 years. If our current model is functioning effectively, one must question the rationale behind making alterations that risk the stability and well-being of our children. I urge you to provide a comprehensive explanation of the reasons driving this proposed adjustment, particularly regarding the pressures it may place on our students to mature more rapidly than necessary. The next is from Stacy, I'm not sure I can give you Stacy's last name, I apologize. Okay, Stacy Deong, I apologize. I'm a parent of two children in the Three Village School District. In December 2013, my family and I moved to Sotoket. At the time, our son was in sixth grade at the middle school in Huntington Beach, California. The prospect of him, followed by his sister, continuing in the ever-plummeting scores of Southern California School District was the catalyst for our relocation. Born and raised in Brooklyn, New York, and having attended the New York City School District, I was eager to come back east for my children's education. My husband is an information technology executive in the healthcare industry, and he landed a position at Stony Brook University Hospital. After extensive research into the local school districts, it was clear that we wanted our children to attend Three Village School District. My husband gave me literally one weekend to buy a home, and my only criteria was to be in Three Village. This was the one thing I was unwilling to waver on. When I walked through Sotoket Elementary School for the first time, it drove home that our decision was spot-on. It's not only the elementary schools that provide such a strong and solid foundation for our children. One of our two middle schools, Jolinas Junior High School, is just ranked best in New York State. Our high school is exceptional. I always feel proud to say my children either graduated or are currently attending Ward Melville High School, where 98% of their students go on to attend a four-year institution of higher education. Why would we mess with something that's working? This isn't just about resisting change, it's about making sure change actually helps the children. I don't see any reason to dismantle a system which has been successful for decades. My son is currently applying to medical school, and my daughter is thriving in an academic and social world that was once told to me would be almost impossible for her to do secondary due to processing delays that were diagnosed when she was in first grade. I attribute her success to the programs and services offered through Three Village and the social and academic structuring of our district. I'm convinced my daughter would not be where she is today if she had attended a different school district. I strongly implore you to take my words into consideration, for I know I stand with many who wish not to change what is not broken and reconsider the reconfiguration agenda. Next is from Tova Berger. I'm writing to express growing concerns from many parents and community members about the reconfiguration plan to bring ninth graders to Ward Melville High School. The reconfiguration plan feels rushed and poorly communicated. When this board approved the plan, you gave yourselves one year to implement it, but did not seek any community input. To date, no physical renovations have been made to the high school, no costs have been disclosed, and the arrangements that have already been made in terms of student schedules and other administrative areas like calendars and grading are simply not a good enough reason to push forward without addressing the growing concerns. Ward Melville is already an intense social and academic environment for teenagers. Adding ninth graders at this time will only increase the pressure, especially without adequate preparation to meet their needs. Our students deserve thoughtful planning, not a rushed decision that risks harming their social, emotional, and academic success. The financial aspect also remains a major concern. Initially, this plan was presented as a cost-saving measure, but discussions of necessary renovations suggest otherwise. The community deserves clarity on the scope and cost of these changes before moving forward. We respectfully urge the board to pause this plan immediately, open a meaningful dialogue with the community, and provide transparency about the financial, logistical, and emotional implications for our students. There is no urgent need to proceed with this plan on the current timeline. Pausing now would allow the district to address concerns, ensure proper preparation, and make a more deliberate and transparent decision. By taking the time to address these concerns, the board has an opportunity to work with the community to ensure a plan that supports the well-being of our students and reflects the values of the district. Next is from Justine Hewitt. I'm writing to express my strong support for keeping a junior high school model. I believe this model can provide significant educational benefits for our students, as well as better support their academic, social, and emotional development. When I first moved into this town, the current model was a major deciding factor on moving here. I've spoken with many other parents who agree. I'm confused because in all the sports and various school events that I'm involved in, everyone says the same, that they want to keep the current model. I'm not sure where those in favor of the change are, but I have not found any. I feel that having this transitional period is critical for students, as it allows them to adjust to the demands of a more complex academic curriculum, while also providing a supportive environment to navigate the changes that lie ahead of them. Sadly, we live in a world where we force children to become older or more mature before they should. Additionally, I attended the last Board of Education meeting where one woman spoke about how well our schools perform compared to surrounding schools, as well as all of New York State. I was pretty impressed with those findings. I teach in a neighboring school, and we are not in the same boat. I fully believe that our current junior high school model has helped with our scores and how we perform as a district. We have amazing teachers and administrators here in Three Village. I think many of them feel it is too late and have given up hope. I know that as a district, we will pull through no matter what. However, if we stop to think about what is best developmentally for our kids, I believe most would agree that keeping what we currently have has been tried and true, and we would remain on top. Next is from Ying Chen. I heard that you were going to have a meeting to discuss "start school later." We should put students' health as a priority. No "start school later," no restructuring. The Society of Behavioral Medicine recommends school officials start middle and high school classes at 8:30 a.m. or later. However, our high school starts around 7:00 a.m. Although my daughters only have one year to graduate, I do hope that kids in our district will have more sleep. Thanks a lot for your help. Next is from Carmela Tellercio. I'm a parent of three Ward Melville High School graduates. I'm also an educator, therefore I have seen firsthand the detrimental effects of sleep deprivation on our students, particularly the teenagers. The impact on their mental health, academic performance, and overall well-being is undeniable. With this in mind, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the proposed grade restructuring. Should it be implemented without a change to later start time in secondary school? The grade restructuring simply cannot take place without the change in start times to a later time. When the reconfiguration survey was sent to parents, the administration led the community to believe that secondary school start times would be moved later regardless of the grade structure. Now, with a conditional commitment to later start times, it would be unacceptable to proceed with changes in grade structure that would certainly further exacerbate student exhaustion and stress. If start times remain early, the student undergoing school transitions will be even more sleep deprived than they already are, undermining any potential benefits of the restructuring. At a time when adolescent mental health is already in crisis, we cannot afford to implement changes that could make things worse. If this fundamental improvement cannot be guaranteed, then the restructuring must be paused. I strongly urge the Board of Education to prioritize student well-being by ensuring that later secondary school start times are in place before any grade restructuring moves forward. Our district has always prided itself on supporting our children. This must remain our guiding principle. Next is from Barbara Rosati. For the last five years, our two groups, together with many other community members, have closely followed the school district's activities and governance. We have asked two different district administrations and multiple Board of Ed members to move the secondary school start times to later, healthier start times. We discussed our issues, the research, and the numbers multiple times, both with the board and with the administration. A petition outlining our concerns obtained 1,700 signatures. From the district's own survey, it is clear that approximately 97% of the Three Village students are currently sleeping some three hours less than the medically recommended number of hours. There's very little parents of goodwill can do to help unless the school start times are moved closer to the teens' biology. Many of you have campaigned on this issue and on mental health issues. This change does cost money. Fifteen years ago, the district cut transportation costs to the detriment of an entire generation's health and welfare. This change is now more costly than it would have been if the district had prioritized the kids' health when there were fewer financial constraints. Effectively, the district has been pre-riding for 15 years on the back of local families. We have been told repeatedly that the kids' health is our priority. Yet, year after year, there never seems to be enough funds in the school budget for this change. Instead, we have seen many costly district initiatives take place, initiatives that benefit at best a few students, and at worst, mostly the administration or the unions. One of these initiatives was grade restructuring. The district administration used a survey to choose the restructuring model. Parents were told by the administration that start times were not included in the survey because, quote, "it's a health issue," implying that start times would be addressed regardless of the restructuring. Now, it seems that the restructuring, whose full, comprehensive costs have never been disclosed, is proceeding, but the start time change is pending budget review, which raises the possibility that some 700 children might have to get up even earlier than the current ungodly hours. We are appalled and disappointed that this possibility has not been clearly and forcefully ruled out, as we warned several times such a move would prove unhealthy for the children. And once again, the parents' medically backed concerns would be ignored. A school budget that allows the move of the sixth graders to the middle school and the ninth graders to the high school without adjusting the school start times would be equivalent to asking parents and taxpayers for money to pay for actively harming the children. We sincerely hope the Board of Ed and the district administration will not put the parents and community in this position. Thank you. And in addition to Barbara Rosati, this is signed by Quin Yan Ma on behalf of the Three Village Parents Alliance and the Asian American Association of Greater Stony Brook. Next is from Gwobin Hu. As a concerned parent, I want to express my concern one more time. It has been very clear that budget is not an issue for "start school later" since the increase of cost because of "start school later" is so small compared to the overall budget. I hope the Board of Ed can take the concern of the majority of parents seriously, vote yes to "start school later." Next is from Barbie Chen. I'm writing to urge the board to pause the grade restructuring unless secondary school start times can be moved to later, healthier hours. Studies consistently demonstrate that early school start times have a detrimental effect on teenagers' mental health, cognitive abilities, and general well-being. Students going through school building transitions will face even greater difficulties if they are required to adapt to new environments while already severely sleep deprived. If the intention behind restructuring is to support students, it cannot come at the expense of their health. To prioritize student health, later start times must be established before any grade restructuring takes place. Our students deserve an environment that nurtures success, not one that exacerbates their fatigue and stress. Next is from Maria Obialls. I'm writing as a concerned member of our community. It's my belief that if the planned adjustments to start times are not implemented next year, the health, academic, and athletic outcomes for our sixth and ninth graders will worsen as they will be forced into earlier school start times. The board must prioritize the health of our students in any decisions made. I urge the board to take a comprehensive approach to these decisions and recognize that the start times are a critical element that cannot be overlooked. If the necessary changes to school start times are not implemented, I respectfully ask that any plans for grade restructuring be paused until a solution can be reached that prioritizes the health and development of our students. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next is from Jennifer Sloot. Please do not restructure the grades if a healthier start time cannot be accommodated. Our children need a schedule that is aligned with their sleep needs at the ages they are at. Let's do it right the first time in what's best for their well-being and give them an opportunity to learn when their bodies and minds are ready. Next is from Eva Carcellas Povera. This is a mom of two elementary school children, one of which is going into sixth grade next year. With this email, I am asking that the grade restructuring is also postponed if the start times are not adjusted to later, healthier start times. This is from Fan Yi. I'm a parent of the Three Village Central School District. I have a daughter attending Jolinas. I'm asking the board to vote yes on "start school late" and the school district to take immediate actions to implement "start school late." We have all known how much negative impact that deprivation of sleep could cause to children, yet that's what the current school district's schedule has been doing to our children. This must change. In the past, budget has been cited as the reason not to implement "start school later." However, the real question is priority. Do we prioritize the health of our children in budgeting? The answer should be an unequivocal yes. I respectfully request that the board and school district take immediate budgetary and operational actions to implement "start school later." Next is from Jing Cheng. I'm writing to express my strong support for the "start school later" initiative and to urge the board to prioritize its implementation. Our high school currently has one of the earliest start times on Long Island. This means that many of our students are waking up before 6:00 a.m. to get ready for school. Research consistently shows that such early start times negatively impact students' physical and mental health, leading to sleep deprivation, decreased academic performance, and increased stress. The lack of sufficient sleep can have lasting effects on cognitive development, emotional regulation, and overall health. There's been tremendous effort from parents, school staff, and board members to push for a later school start time. We cannot afford to see this initiative fail at the final step. We understand that implementing SSL may be contingent on the budget, but the health and well-being of our students should remain the top priority in any decision-making process. It's clear that our school district has the financial resources to make this change, and the issue is not a lack of funding, but a matter of determining priorities. By investing in later start times, we are investing in our students' health and academic success and overall quality of life. This is not just a financial decision, but a moral one, one that demonstrates our commitment to the well-being of the next generation. The next is from Janet Leatherwood. The proposed restructuring would move even more of our young people into earlier start times. Early start times are bad for learning and health for most teenagers. I beg you to prioritize moving secondary school start times later and not restructuring until this can be done. Next is from Angeline Judax. I'm writing to urge the board to pause the restructuring unless secondary school start times can be moved to later, healthier hours. As a mom of a current sixth grader, I'm immensely vested in the well-being of our students. Research has consistently shown that early school start times negatively impact teenagers' mental health, cognitive function, and overall well-being. Students undergoing building transitions will face even greater challenges if they're forced to adjust to new school environments while severely sleep deprived. If the goal of the restructuring is to benefit students, it must not come at the cost of their health. Prioritizing student health means ensuring that later start times are secured before moving forward with grade restructuring. Our students deserve a learning environment that fosters success rather than one that contributes to their exhaustion and stress. I am personally a product of three school systems from across the world, both east and west. When there's a will, there's a way. I understand the complexities and the competing priorities. I'm grateful and appreciative of your hard work. Next is from Alvaro Begay. My name is Alvaro Begay. I'm the father of three children in the district, an eighth grader and two sixth graders. I recently learned that you're considering postponing the implementation of later school start times, even though I was under the impression this decision had already been finalized. I trust that if you are contemplating a delay, there are important reasons for doing so. However, I would like to point out that combined with the upcoming grade restructuring, a delay might lead to even more students starting their day very early. This situation could be detrimental to their health and well-being. Therefore, I respectfully request that you also postpone the grade restructurings if the later start times cannot be implemented as planned. This is from Ji Yang. I'm writing to express my support for the proposed transition of sixth and ninth graders to new schools in the 25-26 academic year. However, I'm deeply concerned about the impact this transition will have if the current school day schedule remains unchanged, since the change in school start time was said to be contingent upon budget despite that we have got an email notifying us how the start time will change. If the existing schedule continues, sixth graders moving to junior high school will experience a dramatic shift in start time from approximately 9:30 a.m. to 7:35 a.m., nearly two hours earlier. Ninth graders transitioning to high school will begin their day at 7:05 a.m., 30 minutes earlier than their current time. These abrupt changes pose serious health and academic risk for both age groups, particularly as they navigate significant developmental and social transitions. As a parent of two students who experienced the current school schedules firsthand, I've seen the negative effects of early school start times on and the issue is not a lack of funding but a matter of determining priorities. By investing in later start times, we are investing in our students' health and academic success and overall quality of life. This is not just a financial decision but a moral one, one that demonstrates our commitment to the well-being of the next generation. The next is from Janet Leatherwood. The proposed restructuring would move even more of our young people into earlier start times. Early start times are bad for learning and health for most teenagers. I beg you to prioritize moving secondary school start times later and not restructuring until this can be done. Next is from Angeline Judax. I'm writing to urge the Board to pause the restructuring unless secondary school start times can be moved to later healthier hours. As a mom of a current sixth grader, I'm immensely vested in the well-being of our students. Research has consistently shown that early school start times negatively impact teenagers' mental health, cognitive function, and overall well-being. Students undergoing building transitions will face even greater challenges if they're forced to adjust to new school environments while severely sleep deprived. If the goal of the restructuring is to benefit students, it must not come at the cost of their health. Prioritizing student health means ensuring that later start times are secured before moving forward with grade restructuring. Our students deserve a learning environment that fosters success rather than one that contributes to their exhaustion and stress. I am personally a product of three school systems from across the world, both east and west. When there's a will, there's a way. I understand the complexities and the competing priorities. I'm grateful and appreciative of your hard work. Next is from Alvaro Begay. My name is Alvaro Begay. I'm the father of three children, the district, an eighth grader, and two sixth graders. I recently learned that you're considering postponing the implementation of later school start times, even though I was under the impression this decision had already been finalized. I trust that if you are contemplating a delay, there are important reasons for doing so. However, I would like to point out that combined with the upcoming grade restructuring, a delay might lead to even more students starting their day very early. This situation could be detrimental to their health and well-being. Therefore, I respectfully request that you also postpone the grade restructurings if the later start times cannot be implemented as planned. This is from Ji Yang. I'm writing to express my support for the proposed transition of sixth and ninth graders to new schools in the twenty-five, twenty-six academic year. However, I'm deeply concerned about the impact this transition will have if the current school day schedule remains unchanged, since the change in school start time was said to be contingent upon budget despite that we have got an email notifying us how the start time will change. If the existing schedule continues, sixth graders moving to junior high school will experience a dramatic shift in start time from approximately nine thirty AM to seven thirty-five AM, nearly two hours earlier. Ninth graders transitioning to high school will begin their day at seven oh five AM, thirty minutes earlier than their current time. These abrupt changes pose serious health and academic risk for both age groups, particularly as they navigate significant developmental and social transitions. As a parent of two students who experienced the current school schedules firsthand, I've seen the negative effects of early school start times on adolescent well-being. My eldest son struggled with chronic sleep deprivation. Despite our best efforts, such as driving him to school to allow an extra twenty minutes of sleep, he experienced difficulty eating breakfast, had low energy, et cetera. Now in college, he finds managing a schedule much easier and healthier. My elder daughter, who's currently a tenth grader, has similar issues. Scientific research consistently shows that adolescents require more sleep for cognitive function, emotional regulation, and overall well-being. Moving school start times earlier, especially during key transitional years, will only intensify stress, sleep deprivation, and academic difficulties for our students. I strongly urge the Board to prioritize later school start times alongside the school restructuring process. We have to seize this opportunity to implement a more developmentally appropriate schedule for our students. The next is from Satyria Everett. I respectfully request that the Board postpone the grade restructuring plan until commitment to later secondary school start times is secured. Extensive research demonstrates the adverse effect of early school hours on adolescent mental health, cognitive performance, and overall well-being. Implementing grade restructuring, which involves significant student transitions without addressing the issue of early start times, will create a situation where students are forced to navigate change while suffering from sleep deprivation. If the restructuring aims to improve student outcomes, it must be aligned with their fundamental health needs. Students require adequate sleep to thrive, and later start times are essential. The next is from Miguel Catalina. It's come to my attention that there's a chance the Board will proceed with the grade restructuring, moving sixth grade to the middle school and ninth to the high school without changing the start times. I consider the possibility extremely undesirable, as it will cause even more kids to be subjected to the absolutely insane school start times. I think this will be the worst option available to us. Please keep the grade changes and the start times in lockstep. If it's not possible to approve the earlier start times, please do not proceed with the grade restructuring. Next is from Roxanne Karimi. I urge the Board to pause the grade restructuring unless secondary school start times can be moved to later healthier hours. Scientific research clearly shows that our early school start times negatively impact children's mental health, cognitive function, and well-being. Your own efforts reviewing this information identified potential options that would move us in the right direction. The evidence has been clear on this for well over a decade. Restructuring the grades without adjusting the start times will exacerbate the impact students will face next year as they adjust to new school environments and expectations while severely sleep deprived. Next is from Yu Sun. I'm sending this email one more time to state my opinion. Start school later has to be implemented at the same time with the restructuring. Without start school later, we're having more students, sixth and ninth graders, suffer from health issues. It was my perception that SSL was a done deal when the superintendent emailed our parents last October. Please vote yes to SSL for our kids. Next is from Jenny Fung. I'm writing today in support of start school late. I know we're all aware of the physical and psychological benefits of SSL. I'm writing to share my own conversation with my sophomore. This morning around one twenty AM, they and I were in the dining room because they had been trying to sleep since ten thirty PM and still couldn't fall asleep. Usually, they fall asleep around midnight. I'm not going to get into too much detail because this is pretty specific, but this child still manages to have lots of volunteer hours and tries to help out wherever needed. She is suffering because she's always so tired from a lack of sleep. Next is from Hua Wang. I'm writing to urge the Board to implement starting school time as announced in Dr. Scanlon's email to the community in October of 2024. As I understand, the budget is always tough, but I'm glad the Board and our school district and community in large part agreed to put our students' health as top priority with unanimously vote on yes for this matter during the October 2024 Board of Education meeting. With the school start time change outlined in Dr. Scanlon's email, which is so applauded by the community, they all think it's a go, the cost of about $1 million, which takes about 0.5% of the overall budget, should not be hard to be allocated in this year's budget. I urge the district to put the money saved from the restructuring and all the teachers' retirements and from other sources into the implementation of start school times first before they are allocated for other purposes. This will have direct impact on our students' life. Implementation of this change will improve their overall health and well-being, both physically and mentally. I cannot see other better use for taxpayers' money. Next is from Joy Liu. I'm writing to urge the Board to pause the grade restructuring unless secondary school start times can be moved to later healthier hours. Research has consistently shown that early school start times negatively impact teenagers' mental health, cognitive function, and overall well-being. Students undergoing building transition will face even greater challenges if they are forced to adjust to new school environments while severely sleep deprived. If the goal of the restructuring is to benefit students, it must not come at the cost of their health. Prioritizing student health means ensuring that later start times are secured before moving forward with grade restructuring. Our students deserve a learning environment that fosters success rather than one that contributes to their exhaustion and stress. Next is from Lauren Chorney. As a parent in the Three Village District, I find later start times to be extremely important. Our preteens and adolescents deserve and require that extra sleep, and every scientific study underlines its importance. We implore you to enact the later start times and to pause any other initiatives until this is accomplished. With the current start time of seven oh five, most Ward Melville students are at their bus stops at six thirty AM. Many are waiting outside much earlier. This schedule requires waking up before six AM. To achieve the recommended hours of sleep, eight to ten hours for adolescents, some of our Ward Melville students should be getting into bed by seven thirty PM so they can be asleep by eight PM. Perhaps some Ward Melville students are lucky enough to have a sleep schedule which is naturally this early. They are the minority. Even with the best sleep hygiene practices imaginable, this is simply not biologically attainable for the vast majority of high school students. Anyone who says that being asleep by eight PM is an achievable goal for most adolescents is simply wrong. I appreciate your dedication to ensuring that later start times are enacted for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As parents, we appreciate your thoughtfulness and care.
Do you know how many more there are? Because we're up in thirty minutes. Is it okay?
I have one more. That's it. I can do it. As a longtime resident of the district, I have been diligently advocating for a later school start time for over ten years. Sorry, this is from Denise Williams. The district and community have been working tirelessly on a later start time for the physical and mental well-being of our students, and now it appears due to budget constraints that it may not be implemented. I'm writing in support of implementing the later start time in the upcoming year, especially with the restructuring of the sixth and ninth grades. Students undergoing transitions will face increased sleep deprivation, compounding the difficulties of adjusting to a new school environment. The science is clear. Early school start times are detrimental to adolescent health, cognition, and emotional well-being. In a time when our teenagers are experiencing unprecedented levels of stress and mental health challenges, it's imperative that we do not make changes that will worsen their well-being. Without later healthier school start times, the benefits of the restructuring will be negated by the serious health consequences of chronic sleep deprivation. I'm disappointed once again in the administration and the Board of Education not thoroughly taking into consideration the community's extensive research and proposals. I strongly urge the Board of Ed to pause the proposed grade restructuring should later start times not be guaranteed for our secondary students. That is it. All right, that brings us now to our items for Board discussion for a conversation about the budget. We turn it over to Mr. Carlson.
So this is our first official Board Budget Workshop, even though we've discussed the budget a couple of times already. So just to map out the rest of the timeline, in addition to tonight, March nineteenth and April ninth are at those board meetings, we'll be having budget discussions. The Board is scheduled to adopt the budget on April ninth. The following day, I submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department and the Comptroller's Office. May seventh is our budget hearing, and budget hearing is an official term where we just review the budget that's going up for a vote. The budget hearing has to be between seven and fourteen days prior to the budget vote. And then the vote itself is Tuesday, May twentieth, the third Tuesday in May. So tonight, I'm going to discuss, even though I discussed already, the tax cap. Revisit that just briefly again, a little bit about state aid, some of the other revenues we have, some of our major cost increases, and I haven't covered transportation yet, so I'll cover that tonight, and then where all of that leaves us as far as putting the budget together. So the tax cap, I reviewed in more detail, the calculation itself at the last board meeting. And just to reiterate, there are a number of factors that go into the cap, and it's still commonly referred to as the 2% tax cap, but it's not just a 2% increase. That's one of the factors that can be up to 2%. Sometimes it's lower than that, but there are other variables that go into it. It varies year to year, and every school district's cap is different. For our purposes, for this coming up year, our cap is 2.78%. This incorporates the reduction in our capital projects for next year, from the three million that we have in the current year's budget to one and a half million dollars next year. That's what was discussed at the last board meeting, as you may recall. If we kept capital projects at the same three million dollars, next year's cap would have been 3.64%. So there was discussion with the Board to lower that capital projects to one and a half million, which then lowers our cap to 2.78%. So the budget that we're building, we're building the budget to conform with that. The governor released her state aid proposal back in January with her executive budget proposal. It increases our state aid by a net, not counting building aid, which I'll explain why in a second. It increases our state aid by about $238,000 next year. There's a 2% in the, the minimum for any district in the state increase in foundation aid for next year is 2%, and that's what we got in our proposal is the 2% increase, which comes out to about $591,000. But there are other categories of state aid that are, some are going up, some are going down. It nets out to $238,000. Again, I'm not including building aid in that total because building aid is part of the tax cap calculation. So just as an increase in capital projects increases the tax cap dollar for dollar and vice versa, so a decrease in capital projects, which is what we're doing for next year, lowers the tax cap. Well, the same but opposite happens with building aid. An increase in building aid lowers the tax cap, and a decrease in building aid increases the tax cap. Our, as I, again, as I discussed last time when we went over the tax cap calculation, our building aid for next year is decreasing because we're finishing, we're getting through this current year, all of the building aid related to our 2007 bond referendum. We still have a couple of years to go on the payments. We'll see the opposite happen in a couple of years. We'll see the payments end, but there won't be a corresponding decrease in the building aid. But for now, for operational purposes, with the governor's budget proposal, it's a $238,000 net increase. Now, we don't know what the final state aid will be yet. That will be determined when the state budget is completed. The due date is April first. They almost never have it done by April first. Lately, it's been first week of April, not so bad. Going back twenty or so years, there were times when the budget, state budget wasn't done till August. So that created a lot of problems, but now they usually get it done early April, not April first, but early April. Now, in normally, historically, the governor's budget proposal has been the floor of state aid for the year, and it, when the New York State Senate and State Assembly are through with it and there's a deal and all three, governor, Assembly, Senate, agree on a budget, it generally goes up from what the governor's budget proposal was. There's no guarantee in that, but that's normally what happens. So we're hopeful that our aid will increase some from where we're at right now, although, I mean, we, I mean, at most, I'm going to say that 2% increase in foundation aid, maybe it will be 3%. No, if it is, that's almost $300,000 more, so, okay, more is good, but we know it's not going to be millions of dollars more. We know that. But as I said, hopefully, prior to the Board adopting the budget, we will know final state aid numbers. So the tax levy and state aid make up about 94% of our total revenue. The other revenues that we have, and these are all for what we can anticipate for next year, are interest revenue, because we get our money in bunches, and then when we get the money, we invest it. We're very limited in the type of investments we can use. They have to be fully collateralized by the banks, by what's called third-party collateral, meaning I put, we put money in this bank, a third party, another bank pledges collateral for that. So should this bank go out of business, and they have higher rates at the time. The tuition is what we charge to other districts for sending kids here to our programs. We have a number of them, mostly special education for programs that we run that those districts don't operate. We do have a handful of people, parents in other districts that ask to send their kids here, and they pay tuition. So that's all included in that. By the way, we do not pay tuition to any other school district. We have students attending BOSI schools or private schools, such as like for special education reasons, such as DDI or an HRC, those type of schools, but we do not pay any other school district tuition. Other school districts do send their kids to us, though. Adult education generates some revenue, driver's education, our SAC program, that's a fee-based, and that's just based on enrollment. And over the last few years, ever since COVID, the numbers have increased on that each year. The pre-k enrichment piece, that's, so for anyone who's not familiar, we have a pre-kindergarten, a half-day pre-kindergarten program that's no cost to the parents. It's half-day. If somebody that has a child in the half-day program would like to send their child to the other half of the day, that's an enrichment program that we could charge for. We cannot charge for an instructional program. We're a public school district. We can't charge for a pre-kindergarten program. We can charge for after-school care. We could charge for enrichment, so we could charge for that half of the day, not the pre-k piece. So this is the, by the way, when we talk about universal pre-k aid, we've had those discussions before, why don't we get the full amount of aid? It's because we would need to put in a full-day pre-kindergarten program, which, and what we've said is, yeah, to get that aid would actually cost us more than what we're paying now. Part of that determination is that we would lose this pre-k enrichment money, revenue. Our summer recreation program is always very popular. That generates revenue. Our community swim. And then other. And other includes pilot, which is payment at low of taxes, which I discussed when we were talking about the tax cap calculation, any use of facilities. Prior-year refunds is mostly from BOSIs. We pay BOSIs a month. We do an annual contract with BOSIs for the services that we're going to be getting from them for the year, which includes students that we would send to BOSI schools, whether it be for special education or career and technical education. And then we pay throughout the year. And at the end of the year, if there was a reduction in the fees, because they, when they, when the year is over and BOSIs does all of their calculations as to all of their costs and revenue, there's a refund back. They always overcharge some, and then they pay us the money back. That's included in that. That's what most of prior-year refunds is. Health services is for, we charge other districts for residents of other districts that attend private school located within Three Village, for example, Laurel Hill. Students that attend Laurel Hill schools, we have to provide health services, nurse, psychologist, social worker, as needed, for Laurel Hill students. In turn, for any of those students that come from another school district, we charge those school districts that. Now, we also pay for the same thing, for Three Village residents that are attending private schools located in other school districts. They bill us, and that's on the expenditure side of the budget. And then, and then the last thing is the appropriated fund balance. And that's, in an ideal world, it's money that we have left over at the end of the year, unspent in the budget, and we just use that as a revenue the following year. It's not, we don't always have that whole three and a half million dollars left over. Certainly, since COVID, we have not, which is why, when we've talked about our fund balance and reserves, they've been decreasing each year because we don't have that full three and a half million. What I would like to do is sometime soon, in the next couple of years, is reduce that down, but we're not in a position this year to be able to reduce that. So that's the other revenues. And again, collectively, they come up to about 6% of the budget. Now, just a couple of the major increases, cost increases we're looking at in this coming up year. Contractual salaries are up by, with all, this is with current staffing, right? No changes to staffing, current staffing, $6.1 million. Health insurance, $5.3 million. If you remember, when I, when I was talking about benefits at the last meeting, and I said 5.1 million, I've been saying 5.1 million on health insurance. One thing that One thing that we, we do know now is that we have 20, 20 teachers and two administrators retiring this year. So, what we do in the budget for next year, for those people, we, we, well, we have a cost savings, right? So, for, to start with, I assume we're replacing every one of them. And then, as we go through and we say, well, if we don't need to replace this, we don't, that's a, that's a different, that's a different deduction. So, first, though, so I lower the salary amount, right? So, if somebody's retiring at whatever salary and their replacement's coming in at a lower salary, that salary codes, well, lower that. I'll lower the retirement system code with the, because the retirement system cost is a percent of salary. And then I'll lower the social security code, because that's a percent of salary. But then I'll increase health insurance, because if, for the most part, the retiree is still on health insurance, and now the replacement will also be on health insurance. So, it's a net savings, but it could increase the health insurance line a little bit. So, that's why that number's all different, because we have those 22 retirements to factor in. Again, it's saving us over $2 million total, but part of that savings is we had to increase health insurance a little bit. Transportation, which I'll cover in more detail in a minute, is going up by a little over $1.1 million. And then the other benefits, that's the ERS and TRS, that's the two retirement systems, and FICA is social security. Those combined, it's about a $900,000 increase. There are other increases in things like our insurance and utilities and, you know, liability insurance, utilities, some of the contracted services are increasing, but these are the major increases that we're looking at, just to give you an idea of where we are with building the budget. Now, to go over, excuse me, transportation, a little more detail. So, all of our students are eligible for transportation, right? That was a change that was made in 2017, 16, 17, I think it was, 2017. It was voted upon by the community. Prior to that, elementary school students had to live at least a half-mile from school to be eligible for a bus. Junior high had to live at least three-quarters of a mile, and high school, mile and a half. Now, one of the main drivers of, of changing that was that, for example, probably the worst example, is that there were students that lived in the S section off of Nichols Road who attended Murphy Junior High School, who lived within that three-quarters of a mile and had to cross Nichols Road. And there is a provision in the New York State Education Department transportation regulations to establish what's called a child safety zone, where it could be, transportation be allowed for a student or students that live within that, that mileage or distance eligibility requirement, still be eligible because they live in a particular dangerous location. They have to traverse a dangerous area, the bus stop is dangerous, whatever, for the number of reasons it could be. And there's a point system to determine that. Just to give you an idea, crossing Nichols Road did not qualify. So, that'll tell you the level of danger that would have to be involved for it to be considered a child safety zone. So, anyway, so there was a, a lot of discussion at the time, and ultimately, that now, the board, either administration or the board, has the authority to change those distance eligibility requirements that has to be voted on by the community. So, a separate proposition was put up in, I think it was 2017, with the, with the budget vote, to do away with the mileage, the distance eligibility requirement, make it zero. And that was passed by the, by the voters. So, all of our students are eligible for transportation. Our district covers 22 and a half square miles, and where it gets tricky for us on a transportation operation is that we have areas of the district where the roads are flat, they're wide, there are sidewalks, and then we have areas that, we all know, there are areas of the district where the roads are very narrow, windy, and no shoulders, let alone sidewalks. So, we have areas of the district where a school bus can stop, make, at one stop, pick up 12 or 15 kids, go to another stop a half-mile away, pick up another 12 or 15 kids, maybe one more stop, and then go to the school. And then we have other areas of the district where the bus can stop, pick up one student, drive three-quarters of a mile on narrow, windy roads, pick up another student, then drive another three-quarters of a mile, pick up another student. And so, by the time there's 12 kids on the bus, that first student might have been on the bus for 40 minutes already. So, and then it might have, if it's up in the northwest corner of the district and it's a high school bus, it still might have 15 or 20 minutes to get to Ward Memorial High School. So, that's part of the reason why sometimes you see like, well, there's only 12 kids on the bus, why don't we just combine buses? Well, it's, they don't have enough time to complete their route, drop those kids off, and then get to the next school for that route, and that'd be, whether it be AM or PM. So, so when we talk about the cost increases, extending transportation contracts, so a school bus contract can be extended one year at a time, but the increase cannot be more than the increase, the increase in the Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, as determined by the State Education Department for school bus transportation purposes. They, they set that CPI increase rate in May of each year, and to give you an idea, last year it was 3.9%. So, we can, so this past year, we, we extended our contract with our bus company at that 3.9%. We cannot go above that. Even if we agree, the bus company says, nah, we can't do it for 3.9%, we need more. We can't just say, okay, yeah, yeah, we, we understand, we'll give you a 5%. We can't do that. We cannot go above that. If we do not, but, but both sides have to agree to extend it. So, generally speaking, we would always say, unless we're unhappy with the, with our service that we're getting, we would say, sure, we'd like to extend, because the danger in not extending the contract is that if we have to do, it's not a bid, it's proposals. If we have to do what's called an RFP, a request for proposals, there's only a handful of bus companies, school bus companies on Long Island to begin with, and really only ones that, that have operations kind of nearby can even, can even submit proposals for us. A bus company in, out in western Nassau County wouldn't even be able to provide services for us. So, there's not that many companies. And if you remember during COVID, one of, we used to have two separate bus companies. The one that we used for mini-buses, Acme slash Baumann, went out of business. So, they weren't one of the major bus companies on Long Island. By them going out of business is even less competition. So, what's going to happen eventually, especially because of the electric vehicle mandate, is eventually our bus company is going to say, we can't, we can't go on, extend that CPI, and we'll have to do, we'll have to do a request for proposals at the time, and then see what happens. So, anyway, so we don't know what the percent increase will be for next year. As I said, last year was 3.9%. The budget for, that we have in the current year, $11.8 million. The budget for next year is a little over $13 million, and the increase is mainly due to the, the start time change, which is, you know, what we had been talking about with the start time for, for, since we started talking about the start time. The, the problem with the start, change in the start time is needing, needing more buses, which means it costs more money. So, just to, you know, put it, you know, keep it, keep in mind. So, right now, our earliest pickup times are around 6:10. There might be a couple of kids a few minutes early now, but, but it's around 6:10. It's the earliest bus stop times we have for any of our high school kids. And the latest schools, Arrowhead, Mount, and Storket, start at 9:25. So, all of our kids between 6:10, maybe a couple of minutes earlier, and 9:25 are picked up and delivered to school. So, if we were to make, let's say, well, let's make the, the high school later, well, either we push all the schools later, or we condense that time. If we condense the time, it needs, we need more buses to, to cover the same amount of area. It's not even so much, well, how many kids? It's covering the same area in a shorter amount of time. That's the reason for requiring more buses. And, and, you know, as we've discussed, you know, many times over the last, we started, Dr. Rosati, back in 2019, talking about this, the, the reason the schools went to the earliest start times back in the early 70s in the first place was to save money on transportation, right? By doing the earliest start times, it spread out the, the amount of time for kids to be picked up and delivered to school, and then same in the afternoon to go home. So, it saved money. Well, now to go the opposite way, it's going to cost money. So, to do that, and we went through this, I don't know how many times, all different kind of configurations, we had the consultant, we tried, you know, whatever we could do to try to figure out the best way to change the start times without pushing those three later elementary schools, Arrowhead, Mount, Storket, later than they already are. One of the, one of the changes that was made in 2010 was they, those three schools used to dismiss at 3:30. Now, they dismiss at 3:40. And I could tell you that 10 minutes, people were not happy with. So, we didn't, we were looking at a way to, to make the secondary schools later without making the elementary schools later also. And that's, again, where it comes into condensing the, the amount of time that, that our transportation begins in the morning and gets those kids to those schools at 9:25. And that requires the additional six big buses and three mini-buses, and that, that costs is a little over $1 million. Now, because of the grade reconfiguration, we can actually cut two buses. So, it would be, it's a, it's actually a net increase of seven vehicles, right? So, it's a net increase of four big buses and three mini-buses to do the start time and the reconfiguration. So, that's, so that's in the budget. So, where do we stand? Well, our total revenue, when using the governor's budget proposal for state aid, using our maximum tax levy allowable, that 2.78%, plus the other revenues, which I just went over, comes out to $237.5 million roughly. Where we are right now with current staffing, well, no, this is not changing any current staffing. I accounted for the savings in people retiring, but assuming we're replacing every one of them, we're at $245 million. So, it's a difference of a little over $7.5 million. That's what we have to make up for in, in the budget. So, and that's what we're working on now. So, the cabinet, we're meeting with all of the building principals and our district-wide directors to go over all the staffing numbers, where can we make reductions, and of course, it's, anything would be with, with, with the idea of being least impactful to our students. So, we're, we're, we're doing that now. So, over the next couple of weeks, when we meet, or two weeks from now, when, when we meet again, we'll have an update for you on that. So, well, that's what we're doing now. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the vote is Tuesday, May 20th. So, that, that's all I have for tonight. If there are any other questions, I'd be glad to take them. But a lot of this is, you know, start thinking about, you know, things, and, and we'll be, we'll be bringing info to you regarding what we're looking at staffing-wise. Dr. Scanlon, did you want to mention anything else?
Yeah, let's, let's finish questions with Mr. Carlson first, then we'll, then we'll jump over. Anybody?
So, as we saw with the public comments, obviously, a lot of people are concerned with these budget numbers and how it affects school start later and the restructuring. So, I just wanted to add to that discussion a little bit. So, the, I think everybody knows that the start time at the secondary schools are unhealthy, right? We're 7:05, which is quite literally the 1% earliest schools in New York State, and so it's long overdue that we have a change. The earliest bus pickup, I think you said, was 6:10, right? And so, students are waking up before 6:00 AM, day after day, week after week, and year after year. And with the reconfiguration, now we're adding another year to this, too, right? Unless we adjust the start times. And so, I think one of the slides, it said that, you know, we, we have a big shortfall, $7.5 million.
Right. Which, which, by the way, I meant to mention, is about 3% of the budget. So, that, that's what that means as a, as a percent of it, is what we need to, one way or another, come up with.
And, and so, the, the only way really we can, we can pay for this, and we were reviewing staffing and identifying areas where reductions can be made, right? Which is, it means it's going to be a bad sort of a budget year for, for reductions in staff, essentially, to a certain extent.
Yes.
And so, when, when start times was being proposed, I don't think anyone wanted to have, you know, no one had this idea that we're going to put start times in and we're going to do this at the cost of, you know, taking staff positions out. These are, you know, it's not just numbers that you see, these are, you know, people's jobs, people's livelihoods, and, you know, teachers have a real impact on the educations of our students, right? So, we're faced with some bad choices here, right? And so, I have like an imperfect proposal that, you know, we can consider. It's, it's obviously a bad budget year. This 12% increase in healthcare, that's sort of extraordinary. That's not a typical increase in healthcare cost.
That is correct.
5.3 million.
And just, and actually, I want to, so the 12.7%, that's our net increase from what we're paying this year to what we'll be paying next year. Depending on you, on how you want to look at it, it's, it's actually more of an increase. That's the, the net cost difference from one year to the next. But what we had this year was we got, our rates are done on a school year basis, July 1st to June 30th basis, our health insurance rates. This year, however, we had a mid-year increase. Never happened before. This year, we did, 5% increase on January 1st. Come July 1st, we're getting a 10% increase. So, when you net those out, I mean, it comes out to that 12.5%. But, but it's actually, health insurance rates over, let's say, that two, that whole year period are going 5% and then another 10%. So, it's, so to your point, though, it's, it's extraordinary high increase. We did have, at one point, and it was in, I want to say 2012, 13, was right around when all, when we had to make a lot of cuts back then, we got a 15% increase. But it normally does not happen that way. It's normally 4% or 5% range.
Okay. So, then, in my mind, I think what we would, what we would need then is some sort of bridge then, right? To take us from whatever the, the current bad situation is to next year, where hopefully we get a normal, a normal increase in healthcare costs, and there's sort of room in the budget to put something like start times in. And so, the sort of, the, the imperfect solution is, you know, we do have an unreserved fund balance, which is a little over, if I remember correctly, a little over $7 million.
Correct.
And the state limit for our unreserved fund balance is around $9 million, right? So, we legally shouldn't go over $9 million.
Correct.
So, of course, more reserves is always better, but we're not, you know, we're close to basically what the, what the state allows. So, the proposal is we could use the reserves to pay for start times this year, and this would give us a bridge to next year, right? This is, it is imperfect, right? So, one is, I don't want to spend reserves. Even the 4% is actually very low for a district of this size, right? The other risk is, we don't know what's going to happen next year. You can't tell me the healthcare cost next year. We hope it's 4%, but if it's another 12% year, that's bad. So, if we do this, we pay for start times one year and healthcare goes up 12%. Again, we'll have the same bad choice we need to make next, you know, we'll have this, these same two, two options, right? Are we keeping start times or are we, you know, is it staff reductions, which, which is a, a pretty bad choice, right? So, I mean, this is a workshop, so we're not voting today on this, but I did want to get this sort of idea out there, where, you know, we'd have some time to consider it. And what it does allow, though, is we could get the start time change immediately in the coming year, right? And we wouldn't further hurt sort of the staff and teachers, and by extension, the children in a difficult budget year, right? We, we could have both, right? And again, it's, it's not without risk, but it's an option I think we should, we should seriously consider.
What is our, what is the level that we would go back into financial stress with the orders?
I don't know, I don't, I don't think lowering our unreserved fund balance by 1 million would put us back into that category of what they call susceptible to fiscal stress. I don't think it would. I don't think it would. Of course, it doesn't help, as Dr. Black mentioned, I mean, it's, yeah, ideally, we don't want to, we want to increase fund balances or reserves, not, not decrease them. I, I do not think that would put us back into that, that category. It's what they call susceptible to fiscal stress. It's a point system. It would add, give us some points, definitely. I don't know, I don't think it would be enough points to put us into that category, though. That bites off.
Yeah. I kind of think it's a little early for us to even be discussing that, because we can't really discuss what cuts we're looking at yet, because we're still can't really discuss what cuts we're looking at yet because we're still working on that. I mean, but for me, my thing are the kids. If anything's going to be cutting for the kids or staff facing students, to me, that's more important than starting a brand-new program that costs a million dollars. So if you're taking out of reserves, we need to use it for what's going to help the kids. But we really can't talk about that yet until we figure out exactly what we're going to be cutting. So I wouldn't be putting any proposals out about a specific program until we see what needs to be cut or modified.
Dr. McKinnon?
Okay. So this year, I had an 8% increase on my property taxes. Property taxes are regressive taxes that preferentially harm the most economically vulnerable in the community. Not a good outcome. This year, the administration of some board members are seriously planning to move start times even earlier to, for two entire grades than they already are. This is particularly problematic for the ninth-grade students for the reasons that we've just heard from a large number of local residents. This year, my understanding, I don't have any insight into this, but my understanding is that we will be having to force, let go, a depressingly large number of employees. From my perspective, these are shockingly bad outcomes. The fundamental problem underlying all of these issues, from, again, from my perspective, is a lack of long-range financial planning. We are running a quarter of a billion-dollar enterprise without any discernible long-term financial goals or a long-term financial plan. For the last five years, I've been pushing to get a five-year financial plan. In fact, we would have been the end of that plan right now if we'd got it when I first joined the back. A financial plan, a long-term financial plan, is not an unreasonable request. There are mid-cap companies listed on the New York Stock Exchange that have less revenue than this district has. Most small-cap companies have less revenue. Each one of these companies has a detailed financial plan with their best effort of financial projections. They have this because their survival depends on effective financial planning. Increasingly, our survival will also depend on very conservative financial planning. A good financial plan would enshrine the rights of taxpayers and parents in the same way that the contracts enshrine the rights for the union employees. A plan would protect parents and children against further degradation of the academic program and protect their children's health, which is a particular concern of mine. A financial plan would provide at least a prospect of some tax relief. I'm not making a lot of promises there, but at least some prospect and at least people would understand what's happening with their taxes. If we had had a, had had a financial plan years ago when I first asked, we would not be now in the position of telling parents that their only option is to agree to a course of action that will harm the health of their children. I'm not comfortable in that position. We should not be in that position. If we had had a realistic financial plan, we would not be straining our credibility by arguing that predictable increases in salaries and health benefits are something other than the predictable results of contracts in the health insurance market. The health insurance market is notoriously bad in this state. Large increases are routine. We've been lucky to largely avoid them. It is Jeff just acknowledged. They've happened in the past. They will happen again. We should have actuarial assessment of that risk. Outcomes matter. This year, we have had several outcomes that are not acceptable. Long-range financial planning would have produced better outcomes. It's not a panacea, but it forces people to face the unreality of their financial expectations. And there's a lot of unreality out there at the moment. Over the next few weeks, I'm going to roll out what I think was a reasonable plan. This is not ideal. I would have preferred the administration to take the lead on this, but this is where we are. I will be proposing a set of policies, not a detailed plan. I doubt this is going to be the last word on this, but at least we get the ball, start the ball rolling. We face a set of bad options, but ignoring the future is not going to make those options any better.
So Dr. McKinnon, the idea that a financial plan being put into place, we are not a business like some of the companies you're quoting. We are very dependent upon state aid that comes in and taxpayer dollars. So I know you're reading from your script again about what you've put out for this. I would love to have seen that plan when you started as a board member.
Sure, it would not have been all that good at this point.
No, of course. But I've been in my position for three years.
Turn your mic on, turn your mic on.
But I've been in the position for three years, and I have yet to have seen any plan come from any board member at any point in time regarding any of these matters. So regardless of it's the reconfiguration or the start time, I gave a plan, a five-year plan to the board over a year ago, which we still have yet to discuss about what directions we're going. Still wondering if we're going to look at that at any point in time. If we're going to look at this, we need to look at it as in its totality. And yes, you are right. There are things that we can control. Health costs are one of those things. This is not a predictable situation in any way, shape, or form. We are very lucky to have Mr. Carlson in his role that has been able to navigate these situations in the past. And I don't disagree with you. The contracts that have been agreed to in the past were basically using money that we didn't have, and we are going to continue to be paying for those things as we move forward. Now we have to make a hard choice at this point in time. I've stated before, of all the administrators that have sat in my role, I am the one that has acknowledged the fact that our start time is way too early. And the simple matter of fact is, we need money to fix that, the same way we save money to get out of it. Let me just finish first, please, sir. I would, I'm going to go over some of the things because I'm accused of lying and misleading and coercing people into doing this plan. I'm going to go over some of those things in a moment to see where we are at right now. And I need for us as a board, you as a board, and for the administration to come together. We are open to any solutions. We're starting, we're going to have a discussion tonight about the property analysis committee. Long time coming for this, to look at some of the properties we own in the district. If any of the sales of those properties could offset some of our budget concerns going forward, that would be a major, major step in the right direction. I completely agree with that. There's also been discussions included within the strategic plan about closing or repurposing a school. We've hit the point this year there, it's almost, it is too late to consider that for next year, but still a consideration going forward. Our enrollment is pretty much leveled off over the past few years. Had we not done some of the reconfiguration, which I'll talk in a moment about, we would be talking about cutting more staff because of keeping at our current configuration. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those things in a moment, but I, I don't disagree with about long-term planning. And I think, you know, we've given some things, the financial piece, now with having the budget advisory committee, this three, the, this is the fourth year, Jeff, or fifth year of the BAC?
Fifth year.
Fourth year of the BAC.
Fourth year of the BAC. And they've made proposals on different considerations as we move forward. I think the experts that have sat at the table from our district and from the community have been very, very helpful in that regard. And we need, tomorrow night, we're presenting this same presentation to that committee to get their input as well. So, you know, the idea, the best idea wins. At least, I, you know, Dr. Back, I applaud you at least for taking a risk of putting out something as a, as a proposal for us to consider, both as the administration and, and the Board of Education. We need more of that thinking as we go into this process. But unfortunately for us, this district and districts like us in Long Island are not getting our fair share of aid. If we were getting $500 million, like one of the largest districts on Long Island, we wouldn't be sitting at this table having any discussion. We would probably be talking about adding more programs and adding different things to our budget. We are not in that position. Last year, the, the governor's proposal of cutting $8 million out of the, out of our funding, we campaigned heavily in this community. We united this community against that. We didn't get a cut, but we didn't get an increase. It still led to some cuts. So in the past three years, we've had a cut each year in different areas and reconfigure for other areas. And as we keep moving forward, we're probably going to have to continue to do that. Whatever we look to do, it's going to have to be with the consideration of what are we going to look like in five years? And what are we going to do in five, next year alone? You know, we wish that we would have a crystal ball to figure out what the rates are going to be for some of these things. It's an unpredictable component of the market. We're at the whim of, of the, the, you know, New York State government with our aid packages and what we get. There was times we were getting far more than this. We could guarantee that we were going to get 3% or 4% increases in aid from the state. That's no longer happening. And now with the Rockefeller Commission's proposals, the, the state is still not sure yet how they're going to reconfigure some of those formulas. Dr. DeBruski and I were just in Albany for two and a half days, working on advocacy and trying to figure out what, what directions we're going in. And it's just still a big question mark. As Mr. Carlson said, the state legislature still has an opportunity to approve the final budget for this. Let's hope it is the first week in April. Let's hope that we wind up getting money in some regard, but we have the plan that we may not get any increase. And we have to look at all of these things. So I just want to be clear, though, when we're talking about, it's not as if we are talking about staffing is the only solution to our financial issues to correct things. The board has at its disposal right now contracts that are, they're working on and negotiating, and they have been very proactive in doing so with our attorneys, trying to figure out ways to mitigate some of the costs in those contracts. I applaud their conversations with our attorney, Mr. Mestek, and, and the unions that we're working with. Some of our unions have been very, very understanding of where we are. We need some probably short-term solutions with some of those as opposed to long-term solutions that may bind us into areas where we can't predict just yet. So I'm looking forward to working with you on that five-year financial plan. Once you have talked to the individuals that you're working with on the outside that want to bring that to the table, perhaps maybe they'd bring it to the BAC and we can have a discussion of that. But that's where we should be heading as well. I think Dr. Lee also wanted to say something.
Can I just respond to that or?
Certainly.
Do you mind? Okay. So I agree that projections are hard. I'm not going to pretend that that isn't the case. I also agree that five years ago, some things that have happened were not predictable. I do think it was predictable that the state would stop giving us money to educate students that we don't actually have. I think that was fairly predictable, given that most of the, or not most, but a large number of the local community were making the same claim, right? Sooner or later, the state was going to figure it out.
No, I disagree with that. And it's not, it's not about the state suddenly realizing that enrollment was down. There are districts on Long Island, their enrollment went up, and they didn't even get their fair share of aid. You know, it's, and the district that we're seeing that's getting $500 million, they actually deserved more than that, and they still haven't gotten that. Mr. Carlson has presented in the past years, there's still, I think, Jeff, you said somewhere around $35 million in, in aid that we have been due that we have still not yet to receive, or districts like us.
Yeah, that was our gap elimination adjustment when they took that money away from us. It was about, I think about $36 million, and we just never got it back.
So with the claim that, oh, we're fully funded schools, you still owe us from all those years. And if, even if we had 10% of that money right now, we probably also wouldn't be sitting looking at this amount of money as it stands.
I, I think the point here is that we need to build contingencies into the costs that we don't control, right? Now, the objection I've heard to that is, well, we should be spending that money. But we, at the moment, we just spend all the money we have, and that is going to lead us, not is going to now, has led us into a pretty bad place.
Don't disagree there.
Okay. And so I'll have a shot at it, and then I'm sure everybody will criticize that. So.
Welcome to my world.
At least it's a stop. Okay?
Dr. Lee?
So my first question related with restructuring, I'll ask after Dr. Scanlon clarify that. I do have one question to Dr., to Mr. Carlson. So there is this approximate fund balance about 3.5 million. Can you elaborate what this is for? So the 3.5 million?
That, well, as I said, that, and ideally, it would be money that's left over in the budget that's unspent, and we just carry that forward as a revenue to offset the following year's budget. In the, since, since COVID, since after COVID, then our budget failed in 2021, '22, we have not had that much left over each year in the budget. And that's what's contributed towards our fund balance and reserves decreasing. If we lower that amount, that creates more of a gap in what we would have to reduce in spending. So the suggestion now tonight was maybe increase that by another million to pay for the start time, which, which we could do, but that's the exact opposite of having that long-term financial plan and saying, you know, and I'm not arguing one way or the other, but, but we're saying two different things. If we're saying, well, let's use more of our, our fund balance to offset current expenditures, and at the same time, let's plan for our future in building contingencies in the budget, those are opposites.
Okay.
So, so the 3.5 million is the same as what it is this year. I would like to decrease that, and hopefully, over the next couple of years, that will start to come down. But that had to go up during COVID and when the budget failed.
Thanks. Okay. Oh, Dr. McKinnon?
Okay. So I'm not trying to micromanage here, but given that everybody's chiming in with a few, well, not everybody, but a few of us are chiming in with a few suggestions. What about the appropriated funds? Can they be reduced at all to help pay for start times? It seems that there are a lot of little pools lying around that we could tap into.
No, actually appropriated, reducing appropriated funds creates more of a gap.
Okay.
It would be the other way around.
Okay.
If we said we'll increase appropriated funds.
I've never really understood the appropriated funds. That won't be in my plan, by the way.
Well, that, and that's a good thing. And, and here's what, and I don't disagree with you about the long-term plan. And it's not a matter of, well, we don't want to do one. It's, it's going back to, to the 2020, '21 school year. That was the COVID year, when we used so much extra, so much of our fund balance to hire all the additional people, buy all of the stuff we needed to keep schools open that year. That's what kind of put us behind the eight ball. And we've been trying to back, get back on our feet since then. And unfortunately, which, what compounded that problem was, during that year, our budget, when we had the budget vote in May, our budget failed. And, and, you know, now, and there are people who say, well, it's because we went above the cap, that's why it failed, which I understand. But the reason we went above the cap was not to be, hey, let's be greedy and let's raise the, the taxes even higher. If you remember, they were still under 2%. Above the cap, and, and the reason even 2%, was less than 2%, was below the cap was inflation was so low during COVID, that meant the tax cap was super low. It didn't mean our costs went down. Just because inflation was so low, it didn't mean our costs decreased. In fact, our costs increased at the same time. So that where we, we intentionally put ourselves behind the eight ball with keeping schools open during COVID, right? That was a, that was a conscious decision by, and it wasn't just the board at the time or just the administration. We, we heard from the community. I mean, we had meeting after meeting, we had the governing, the, was it the governing committee? I forget what we called it. But the reopening committee. And, and that was, that was the sentiment of, of the community was do whatever you need to. You have money in reserves. If you're not going to use it now, what are you even having for? And, and I can see that point. So, so we did that. And then, as I said, unfortunately, the, the budget failed, which sent us back even more. And since then, we've been trying to get back on our feet. And so, and, and when I say like, not that we don't want to do a financial plan, a long-term financial plan, what I mean is, it's hard to do that while we're trying to get ourselves back on our feet. And if you, if you take like a, a financial advisor, right, and you go into a, a, a family, I always try to convert this into like, let's, let's compare it to household finance, right? So like, if you go work with a family, say, all right, we're going to do some financial planning. Okay. How much do you take home a month? Okay. Here's what you take home. Okay. What's your mortgage? What's your car insurance? What's your utilities? How much you pay for food? Okay. What's left over? Nothing. Okay. Well, we're done. There's not much more financial planning. All you're doing, all of your money that you're coming in is going to pay your bills. There's not a whole lot of financial planning to be done. And that's the position we're in now. So how do we, how do we get out of that? Well, we cut spending by more than what, what, what current staffing means and increases. Most of our money, the vast majority of our money goes to salaries and benefits. They're , and they're, they're lumped together. So if we want to make significant cuts, it has to come from that area. It's not by cutting office supplies. I mean, those kind of things we can do, but it just, it doesn't add up to a lot of money. So the, the way we So the way we do that is either reduce spending, all right? And unfortunately, that means things like higher class size, less electives, those kind of things. Now, or we don't. And we say, well, let's do whatever we have to to get through this year. And next year, we'll worry about next year. And that's what we've been doing. I'm not saying that's the right thing, but that's what's been happening the last few years. Now, one thing we know is coming, and I know you're probably sick of hearing me say it. It's coming, I don't know exactly when, is a lot of retirements will be coming sometime soon. We know it. We just know that our staff, I mean, we have 20 teachers retiring this year plus two administrators. It wasn't that long ago, well, we might have two teachers retiring a year. Out of 600, we might have two. Because our staff now is much more experienced. There was a big hiring movement in 1960s. All retired in the 1990s. And then they all got replaced, another big hiring movement in mid-1990s. And now we get 30 years later, we'll start seeing those retirements. And that's going to open up opportunities for things like adding other kind of initiatives, rebuilding our fund balance and reserves, putting these long-term plans in place, establishing like capital reserve, those kind of things. Unfortunately, we're not in the place to do that right now unless we cut staff even more. And then that's, and that's that hard choice. Do we, do we cut staff to have money to not spend that money? And that's a difficult decision, and that's really a board decision. I'll give you an example during COVID. Now, I don't want to say what district it was, but, and I think somebody might have heard me say this before. During COVID, during that year, right, 2021 school year, counterpart of mine in a nearby district was asking me about, you know, had questions about the budget and blah, blah, blah. That my, that business official said that they held spending so tight that year that he needed to start spending more money towards the end of the year because he had too much money left over. That was the COVID year. That school district had kids coming in twice a week, stayed home the rest of the time. And they did basically, because I know people in my office that live in that district, they did nothing those two days they were in school. So that's how a lot of districts operated during COVID. They said, well, we're just not going to spend money. And they wound up with a lot of money left over. And that's not what we did. I don't think that would have been the right thing to do. But, so, anyway.
So that's what I wanted to mention, Jeff. We were the one few districts in the whole country that stayed open for COVID every day. And we built a lot of safety factors into the district, into the schools to keep our kids safe. But the kids went to school every day. And that kept their education where it's supposed to be. And that's why we did it that way, because I was on the board then. And that's when I voted for that. Because it's important to keep the kids going as they should be and keep the kids healthy and keep the district as good as it is. Thank you.
So, and we're still recovering from that, is the point. So on the fund balance reserve side, we're still recovering from that.
Dr. McKinnon, do you have anything else?
Okay, so I'd just like to touch on the start times. I don't want to drag this on too much. But since there were so many letters, I feel I should also respond a little. Parents have a legitimate concern about start times. Collectively, we have created a world that is hostile to children. It's a world obsessed with money and clicks, a world that has greatly limited the agency of children while routinely exposing them to every imaginable adult perversion. It is a world that has made them more neurotic and troubled than ever before. It is a very different world to the one I grew up in, which now looks like a Shangri-La. And it's even very different to the one I brought my older children into. The rapidly increasing rates of emotional disturbance amongst teenagers is a concern for every parent of teens. There are very few effective solutions. One solution which research supports is later start times. Right now, there are parents out there, mothers, who are desperately concerned about their children's emotional health. They are concerned that the move of the ninth grade to the high school, combined with the much earlier start times, is the straw that breaks their kids' back. We should be here for those parents. I will not vote for any budget that makes an already bad situation worse. We understandably hear a lot about security. Tragically, the primary threat to the kids is the kids themselves. We should not be taking actions that increase that risk. I understand all the economic arguments. It's not that I don't get them. I understand all staffing arguments. But that just does not overwrite how I feel about this.
Thank you. All right, anybody else before we turn it over to Dr. Scanlon? Okay.
So we just wanted to give an update since there's been some questions at several meetings about where we are and where we've come from with the strategic plan. So you recall, this whole situation started about four and a half years ago for me when I was put into the role of superintendent the year before Mrs. Pedersich left. And the board's charge was to look at a strategic plan considering these changes that we put into place. Not an enviable situation to be placed into as a new superintendent to make drastic changes in the first year of being in a superintendency. But that was the, that was the task put at hand. So the sheet that we sent out when we did the surveys, which was compiled not by me alone, this was done by multiple people, many people who are smarter than I am and have expertise in areas, that showed all the things that we were looking at with the four different options available for the district. This actually comes, this particular slide is the segment on the costs under the ninth grade and sixth grade moving to the high school. And just for the record, and I'm not going to be on, you know, my bully pulpit of saying, we should have done something else. But if we were truly looking at this from a purely financial discussion, and the board was looking at it from a financial discussion, the discussion would have ended with looking at the Princeton plan. Because that would have saved the most money. So it was never, ever put forward that this was going to be a major financial savings. Unless, of course, that was looked at as the major plan to have been put into place. The survey was done. The community didn't favor that. That was the second least favorable option that was given out right after, right before the, just moving the ninth grade and not moving the sixth grade. And just making sure that everyone is aware, when those surveys were completed, among all the different groups we surveyed, the current configuration was the first option. Keeping exactly what we have right now was the first option. It was not deliberately sent out there and said, no, we're changing regardless. It was, you could keep the first option. That was the second highest rated. But the overwhelming majority of the people surveyed, again, a survey that the board considered the results from, and I know there's some criticism of the survey. By the way, I didn't create the survey. I didn't create the questions for the survey. An international company called Qualtrics, which is much higher qualified than probably any of us in education in this district, was the ones that helped create the survey and did the data analysis. So there was no manipulation on the part of the administration, nor the board, nor anyone else that helped internally help create the survey with the company that was done. So take umbrage with those statements being made repeatedly out there to the community. Because those individuals that did the hard work with this did their due diligence. So, and I tried to deliberately keep myself out of that situation so that those individuals didn't have any undue influence from my level. So this slide does delineate out this, the link there is this page, which is still on the district website. And what we laid out as potentially cost savings in this particular choice that was given. By the way, the board at the time asked for that row to be added for costs. And that was right above the row that showed which districts on Long Island had which configurations. And if you note on that sheet, the, our current configuration, there is no district on Long Island with that configuration left. We're the last ones. And we listed out all the different districts. The option of just moving the ninth grade was only three districts. And the vast majority were the Princeton plan or the change that we're proceeding to. So the next cost of the move to Ward Melville High School, this was done on the 12/18 presentation, 12/8, I'm sorry, presentation of 2023. This was done just prior to the board's vote in January of 2024 to move along with the strategic plan. So the idea that this was never discussed as far as options, as far as costs. There are multiple slides in here to delineate the staffing costs as estimates, what we were looking at. So it can tell you where, we can look at some of those in here. So slide number 12 on this sheet showed what we were talking about with potential increases for guidance counselors, FLESC teachers. It was all delineated on that. As you can see here, the total cost for reconfiguring spaces, as previously described, will be approximately $2 million. So that's in this year's current budget. The $2 million of the $3 million in the capital improvements is in this year's budget and was allocated to go towards this. So please remember that the money in the capital budget, even if we took it out like we just did at the last board meeting, cannot be used for any other purpose other than to reduce the tax levy, right?
Tax cap.
Tax cap. That's it. So that's what was done at the last board meeting by the proposal by one of the board members and done so. So even if we had this $2 million right now, it would be nothing else other than done for, we would use it for other projects right now if we weren't done. So the way the process works, as Mr. Carlson has explained many times when he stood at this podium discussing capital projects and bonds that we've had, that money, when we go, we do the proposals to the state, it sits in state education department offices, gets reviewed. That work is planned to be completed this summer. Now, in that, in the capital budget for the 23, 24 school, the capital budget was 1.4 million. The difference between the present budget and the cost of the reconfigurations in some spaces at Ward Melville is approximately $600,000, which can be placed in the yearly capital improvement line, which we were hoping to do as well this coming year. Again, the capital budget is outside the tax cap. And the approval, we put this forward, that approval had to be done in January 2024, which the board did. And in order for the work to be able to begin this summer. So that was what was done. Now, where we are right now. So just prior to the February break, I provided a review for the board of how everything we went through. So we had an internal review committee and we had a scheduling subcommittee, both tasked with looking at what we're doing, whether or not we could accomplish the goals. They completed their analysis. Now, the scheduling subcommittee came up with the needs for the high school. How many rooms that were needed, what those rooms would be configured for. At that time, they said four extra classrooms were needed, two earth science labs, one art dry room, two music practice rooms, and three guidance offices. So the cost was around the $2 million mark of the $3 million in the projects. At this present time, we need the four extra classrooms and the two science labs. We're also putting into place, we're putting the fax classroom back into Ward Melville High School because with the ninth grade is moving up, we would like to bring back the international food elective, which we have not, the fax lab was removed during COVID and not put back in. This would allow us to put that back in. Regardless of whether we moved the ninth grade or the sixth grade, we'd still want to have that lab back at Ward Melville High School so that we can offer family consumer science cooking classes once again at the school. So we're still reviewing the need for the guidance counselors. Ms. Connolly and Mr. Jane provided a paper to the board, which we gave in the board packet, about the concerns of the changes that have occurred for guidance in the past several years. While we think that, while the number of students at Ward Melville High School is going to be next year approximately what it was in 2016, '17 school year, the students are different than they were at that time period. There's a lot of different issues that have gone on. There's a lot more demands for those students. There's a lot more demands for the counselors and expectations about what they need to do, most of which is because of where their trajectory might be. Whether it's college or career, the counselors are intimately involved in that process. So in order to keep our ratios of counselors to students, the proposal was to add additional guidance counselors, which you have in your packet to review. The reductions in transportation, as previously described, came out to be about $240,000. And this was due to a couple of factors. Where the JV sports in particular, coming up to the high school helps a lot by not having as many buses needed for that. We're still going to need probably a couple of, probably a mini bus for potential eighth graders that would be coming up. And then we would be saving money with also the math students that go to Ward Melville High School from the two junior high schools for first period, not having to be bussed back over to Murphy and Jolinas and missing their second periods in order to do that. There's currently 21.6 FTEs in the sixth grade this school year. So there will be 19 FTEs with the sixth grade going to the two junior high schools, middle schools next year. So that 2.6 savings is approximately $299,000. So we did add some things into this, into the configuration. There are 16 classroom teachers that are teaching English, science, math, and social studies. But we added the two foreign language students, teachers in that area, which, by the way, was in the proposal back in December of 2023, adding the FLESC into the program. And we added an elective that the teacher will be split between both schools to provide another elective opportunity for students. And that is one of our teachers that currently has a business certification that's been in the elementary level coming up and teaching those classes. So giving opportunities for areas like organization and financial literacy. So when you try to combine, let's say, two schools here, initially, when we looked at this from the scheduling standpoint, there was approximately nine sections and nine sections from both junior high schools coming in. So the, since the district that was looking at, the community that was looking at the scheduling timeline, when you combine the two schools together, they had nothing to look at how that was done in the past. How, it would only have to be the 10th grade. So without having an ability, they looked at, all right, let's just go with those numbers in both schools. But when you combine the two together, you don't need 18 sections. We actually wound up only needing the 16 sections. So that helped a lot as we moved up to ninth grade as well. Now, we're in the midst of our students doing course selections right now. The guidance department is working very hard. We're trying to get all these numbers in. We also know that in December, we gave the class size report to the Board of Education with the reductions that we know we have, we can make based upon the classes that are undersubscribed. There are 105 sections of classes at Ward Melville High School right now that are under 15 students. That's just not acceptable to keep moving forward with. And part of the problem with why we're in that position is because we've allowed the scheduling process over the summer, when people get their schedule to come in and people can move things around. I can tell you, back in the summer, in the beginning of the summer, those classes were balanced pretty well across all grade levels and in different courses. But after the students got the schedules and started going in and seeing where they wanted to be with their friends and which courses, those changes. That's why we implemented the change that we discussed earlier this year about we have to limit that. So all the schedule changes that we need to do must be completed by June this year. Otherwise, we're going to perpetually be in a problem whether we keep the sixth grade or keep the ninth graders or we move them with that change occurring. Those, that's got to be solved. Because that, that constant movement of people talking from a five-year financial plan, Dr. McKinnon, is detrimental to our process. It'd be as if we plan out all these things and all of a sudden someone changes their orders at the last minute. Now you don't want the red car, you want the blue car. Well, we're going to have to produce another blue car. So that's, it doesn't work that we just have them hanging around. So we really desperately had to do this. Now, the current estimate of savings, FTEs from that class size report is about 14.3 FTEs. So that amounts to about $1.6 million. So the allegation that the numbers are incorrect and what we're looking at, the strategic plan is approximately saving $983,000 the way we're doing this. That's the 1.6, the 299,000, the 240,000 minus the 1.2 million in the expense for the capital projects. And that savings, we were hoping to use exactly for the start time issue. Not anticipating that the $5.1 million or $5.3 million that you get slammed with, with the healthcare benefits was looming out there. So now, the issue is we need that money right now to help offset those costs. And we discussed this, the detail of that in the exec session. The next several budget meetings, we're going to be making some very hard decisions and some recommendations and going back and forth. We are working with all of the unions in the district. I've met with every union president that would meet with me. Out of the 10 units we have, we met with nine of them. They all came in, all willing to work with us in some capacity to how we can forge ahead. But no one- but no one particular unit is being singled out. There obviously are some units that are having more of a cut than others because of size, but there is not one area. And before we actually touch the staffing, in particular, the classroom staffing, we looked at all the codes in other areas. So we're looking at codes like our security code, that one, before Sandy Hook, we only spent $500,000, where we're spending $3.1 million. We need to cut that down. And the way to save that money is by overtime costs, to cut back on some of that. So every unit that we've had discussions with have really been trying to work with us and trying to navigate this process. And we're hoping that as we continue to move forward, and some of those union presidents are in the audience tonight and watching at home, we continue to work with each other as we move forward in this process to try to solve some of this. And as I've said before, best idea wins. If someone comes to the table like, could we try this instead? We will explore every option before we try to remove more staff. We do not want to increase class sizes. We do not want to see the closing of a school for just the sake of closing, so it makes some awkward appearance to the community that we're financially being irresponsible. The own governing committee of the strategic plan recommended not doing that, but to repurpose the school. So as part of this plan two, when we gave it out in December of, in 2023, we recommended doing something with this building, because this building, the only group in this building as far as students, is the academy. We would have to find another home for them. It's been working very well here, and the students have been very successful here. That program has, can, now in its 12th year, done very well. We can't abandon that program. I don't care where my office is. If you want to put me in a box on the street, I'll work out of my car, but we can't abandon the students in this building. We need to find a location for them. So if we can work out a deal with BOSI's or the Starnibrook School, or the university of some nature, to try to see if this is a viable option, we'll explore that. And I again applaud the board for putting forward the idea of the property analysis committee. We have several properties, some of which have covenants on them, that we need to explore. When that committee convenes, in a few minutes, we'll be talking about who the members are going to be at that. We're going to have four meetings in that committee. If it's cutting off a piece of our property here at North Country on 25A and selling it off, whatever money we get, the board then needs to consider what the options are going for. But as you know, it's not easy to sell land immediately and solve a problem. It's going to take time. We have an 18-acre piece of property off of Hawkins Road, which was going to be another elementary school. There's a covenant on that property, it must be used for an educational purpose. If it doesn't, it resorts right back to the town. So we need to explore what we can do in these different areas. If it's selling the Nichols Road Administration Building, let's put whatever we need to do for it, but let that committee do its work, come up with ideas. I think the selection of the people that are going to be on the committee are some wonderful people. I want to thank everyone that put in to be part of that committee. And one thing I will say is every time we ask for committee membership, we are at no loss of people that want to be on them, and we really appreciate them being there. So we are still continuing to explore every feasible possibility as we move forward with this. But if we're moving ahead, we have done so much tremendous work, and I want to thank Dr. Biscari and Dr. DeBresky in particular with the work they've done with the committees, the transition teams, the courses that have been set up. I also hear from a lot of people in places throughout the community. I've also been in classrooms, and I've been in meetings with parents who've come to me to complain about the reconfiguration, and others that come in to thank us for the configuration. I had a student in my office a few weeks ago with his mother. Mom was very upset. Student came in and said, I can take all these electives when I go to the high school that I can't take right now in ninth grade. Yes, I can be in these clubs that I'm not able to be in, in the junior high schools right now, and I don't have to travel every afternoon in the bus to get to my sport. Yes. Student looked at his mother and said, I'm done, mom, let's go. So that's what I'm also hearing. So we could do more surveys and find out more information, but we've hit the point of, we're ready to roll for next year at this point in time. Students are signing up for the courses. We have a lot of things filling. One area we'll tell you in budget consideration, we have 660 students signed up for business courses next year. That's a record. We have never had that many, even when we had 2,000 students at Ward Millville High School, and eight business teachers. But right now, we have three business teachers, of which teaching staff of that is only 2.7. One of our teachers is a .3 for the work-study program. Their classes are already maxed out. They're between 25 and 30 students in a class. I don't know where we're going to put them if we don't have another business teacher. So as much as a priority for the start time is, this priority is also for the education that we provide to the students and what we're giving them. So I will once again say what I said before when we were responding to Dr. McKinnon. In my administration as the superintendent of schools, we have acknowledged the fact that our start time is too early. We are only one of six districts in the state of New York that is 7:05 early. There's actually a district upstate that's 6:45, which is a really ludicrous time to be starting. One of our audience members, I'm sorry? They have cows, they do have cows. And one of our audience members, who we've had some communication with when we started this process, we recognized a half-hour change is not much. It's, and the only thing we can acknowledge is it's a good start, but ideally, we would love to see a change. We're hearing a lot at the federal level that the federal government is going to implement something. That's coming from the Department of Health, not the Education Department, which we don't know how much longer that's going to exist at this point in time. So we are hopeful that this change, whether it's now or in the very near future, whatever we need to do, we need to make that happen at some point in time. And whatever expenses up on there on that board, we got to find the money to be able to do this somehow, some way. But we have to measure those things comparatively, like what are we able to do right now? No one at this board or in the administration anticipated a $5.3 million, 12% increase, and that's what's killing us. And as much as we could try to plan five years out, no one anticipated last year a proposed $8 million cut, and this year, we got a 2% increase. There are districts that got no increase. There are districts that got ludicrously high increases in things. And what the average person, whether you're a taxpayer sitting in this room, or they're a part of the administration or the board here, or if you're sitting in the audience or you're sitting at home, to really consider is that, as a taxpayer in Long Island, you're only getting a small portion of every tax dollar you send to Albany. A very small portion. You're helping pay for districts throughout the state of New York, New York City being one of them. So it's the burden we bear, and since we are considered a high wealth district, I invited the governor down, I've invited the commissioner down to come see what we look like. We are not the same district that was existing here when I started here in 1996. We're certainly not the same district that was in when I was here 13 years ago, coming back to the district after being in two other places. And we're ever evolving. One area where we're evolving is that E&amp;L population. That population is growing faster than any other single group in this community. Our Asian population in the district now is 14%. You heard from Lauren Pimentel, our poverty level is now at 17%. That's the highest it's ever been. So we need to address these issues as we move forward. And let's just say for a moment, if we kept everyone where it is right now by some of the proposals that have been put out by individuals, and say, no, forget it, we're going to go keep everywhere they are, we are still going to have to make cuts. In fact, if the sixth grade stays where it is right now, we would have to cut four more teachers out of the program because we don't, we don't need them because of the numbers in the classes. And the ninth grade if it stayed, we'd have to cut more teachers if they remained in both of those schools. So yes, we are saving money. And yes, this is, these aren't made-up numbers that only Scanlon does in his office by himself. I don't profess to have any working knowledge complete on my own without the help of Mr. Carlson, Dr. DeBresky, Dr. Biscari, and the entire help of the leadership team in the community, and working with many of the unions in the district. And I appreciate all their support over the past three years, because it's not been easy for anyone as we've gone through this process. Any questions from the board on this?
Dr. Scanlon, thank you for preparing this update. My question was exactly related with this. You actually answered my question. My question was, people's impression is the saving from restructuring, about 1.3 million estimated back three years ago, was to cover the extra cost of transportation, and now you updated it's actually around 1 million.
Right.
However, because of the new cost of the health insurance increase, we have to use partially to cover that. Frankly, I do not, personally, I do not agree with that, because we promised using the saving to cover the extra cost of transportation, but since this is present and it's not predict, I was thinking, it's probably time we use our reserve to cover some of that. That's just my opinion.
As Mr. Carlson said, that's, I applaud Dr. Back for actually making the proposal. That's not an easy one to say. But it's interesting, because I've sat here for the past 13 years as assistant superintendent and a superintendent, and some of the things that have come up, why some of the things that have been proposed, is that we need to increase our reserves, and that we should be putting ourselves in a higher financial status by maintaining those. Dr., Mr. Carlson will look into the factors of whether we're going to go into any fiscal questions with the state. We don't want to be on that report again. That's a major consideration. But as I said, we're open, the administration, and I believe the board is as well, to any suggestions, whether it's from the community, about how we can navigate through this difficult financial time.
Just add one more point. I actually don't agree with keeping more reservation because of a high inflation, the money we don't spend actually worth less in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, very good. So we will move on now to item 5B. This is just an update on our legislative items and what the legislative committee has been up to. On a very local level, we are discussing what, if any, position we're going to take on the battery, proposed battery storage facility. So we're working on that right now. And we've identified as our goals, as we talk to our other leadership, our healthcare costs, transportation, and any possibility of dialing back on the mandate for the electric buses, and possibly getting security removed from the tax cap. So we are in the process of setting up all of our meetings with our local legislators in the next few weeks, and hope to meet with them and have these conversations before and then maybe again after the one House bill's come out in Albany. Okay, that takes us to 5C, our property analysis committee. Again, my thanks to everybody who applied. It was... We could. We could talk about it. Do we want to talk about the battery storage facility?
We don't have to. We're just discussing on what the district's position is going to be on the battery storage, whatever it's called, and if we're going to come out with a position on that, I think we're going to be discussing that and eventually putting out something from the district.
Exactly.
So I just, I just wanted to say that people have probably seen, at least some people have seen the misleading advertising out there. We totally dissociate ourselves from that. It's got nothing to do with Tree Village School District, and we're not happy, is the way to put it, okay? Very deceptive.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, back then to the property analysis committee selections. All right. So after going through this, we've determined it's going to be seven parent members, two community members. There'll be a total of four meetings, and I will just read these off in absolutely no particular order. Joe Baresi, Christopher Jiminello, James Ginnaw, Carmine and Sarah, Lisa Rickmers, John Schneider, Mark Timpon, Peter St. Germain, and Joseph Betts. So thank you all very much for applying. Thank you to those who've been selected. You'll be reached by email tomorrow with some more specific information. All right, unless there is anything else to discuss? Yes, unless there's anything else to discuss, I need to see a motion, please, to return to executive session to finish our earlier agenda items. We have one second. All in favor? No opposed, no abstentions. All right, returning to exec. Thank you, everybody.